Working out of town, you hear the rest of the week? Yeah, probably anytime after five. I'll be, uh, I'll be around, so. Just shot fantastic, I think. You got an idea?
I saw it in the morning.
I saw it in here. I hadn't seen him this week either. You think so? Oh wait, Jeremiah? Oh, uh. Okay, I thought you were talking about Fountain.
Oh, no.
No, I hadn't, I hadn't talked to Fountain since this morning, I've been busy. He's, uh, he's, he won't resurface for a while. He's got his hands full. Lot of, lot of information to learn quickly. Yep, yep. He's, uh, he's in good hands. I think he'll get it, I think he'll get it.
We had an open bar for the whole night.
I was out of town all weekend, so let's play catch up.
Trying to devise a way to vote so that there was.
This is the stills, stills I said all day.
And then they had everybody get to talk about his nomination and everything. Balance, just left the parking lot spinning gravel. Spinning gravel on everybody's car, yeah. So anyway. Yeah, oh yeah, that's right.
They got the library, the library.
Yeah, that's right. And, and that's one after that's when she.
Oh no, I'm, I think I can do it.
Whenever that was.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you tonight to the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. Today is December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, it is seven oh one P M. And we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. And I would like to, uh, read the vision of the city, which is that we will partner with the community to build upon the charm and character of our historic, vibrant, and walkable city to create an extraordinary quality of life for all. For any of those of you that have electronic devices, I'd like to ask you to please mute them or turn them off at this time and invite Reverend Jenny Wilson of Salem United Methodist Church to come forward and, uh, for those who are so inclined, uh, to open our meeting in prayer.
Let us pray. Stand at the crossroads and look. Ask for the ancient paths where the good way lies and walk in it. With these words from Jeremiah six, we pray, O God, for our life together and for the work tonight. In this last month of this year, we give thanks for the listening we have done, for the understanding that has come and decisions and plans that have been made. Truly, we have sought as a community to walk and live where the good way lies. Forgive, O Lord, our missteps. Open us to new possibilities as we address the needs of today and plan for tomorrow. Give us peace, O God, in our work and joy in our relationships so that the beauty of our differences may continue to strengthen our compassion and respect for one another. Lead us in righteousness, O God, and show us the ancient paths where the good way does indeed lie. Then make us bold to walk in it. We humbly pray in your holy and loving name, O God. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend, that was beautiful. And now Commissioner Quan Bridges will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Say if you will stand and face the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we'll consider adjustments to an approval of the agenda. Uh, you will see that, um, item five B, which was to consider approving the manager to request assistance from the league of municipalities to assist the city in finding an interim manager. That item was added to our agenda on, uh, at the agenda meeting on Monday. And so that will, is now stricken from tonight's agenda. And we have nothing at our seats. Oh, excuse me, we are going to remove the engineering update by Amy Ratliff because she is unfortunately out sick, so keep her in your thoughts. She did not look or sound well yesterday when I saw her. Um, but other than that, are there any other comments or adjustments to the agenda that anyone would like to make? Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two changes?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in our governance, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with any matters before the board tonight. If any of you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Let the record note, there is no conflict. And, uh, before I continue, I would like to acknowledge the regrets of Commissioner Tovey that he had a medical procedure last week and is still not in a position to be able to attend tonight. But he sends his greetings particularly for the holidays and, uh, to everyone and, um, looks forward to being back soon, so I hope you'll keep him in your thoughts while he recovers. And, uh, the next on the item, on the agenda is to acknowledge the Morgan Ren Employee of the Month, who is Lieutenant Michael Stockwell of, um, the Police Department. And Lieutenant Stockwell was not able to be here tonight either, but I would like, in absentia, for everybody to recognize him. He is an administrative lieutenant at the Police Department and we, the City of Oxford is celebrating him in the month of December, uh, with the Morgan Adams Ren Employee of the Month Award for his dedication and commitment to working with the public and colleagues to enhance our welfare and safety. And this is something that he thinks about all the time. So will you please give him a round of applause while he is here? And I wanted to ask Commissioner Bridges, as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, did he have anything, uh, to add?
Only that it is well deserved and I have been on the receiving end of this officer's good work. Um, and, and you know, I know that, um, Lieutenant Stockwell continues to serve the city in a very, um, gracious way.
Another round. And at this time, Commissioner Bridges and I, um, are going to come forward because again, we have to recognize somebody in the Police Department. This is belated, but no less deserved, that Officer Caitlin Elliott is the twenty twenty-two Officer of the Year. And so Officer Elliott, will you please come forward? And, uh, Commissioner Bridges was going to say a few words.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, Police Chief, do you want to come up? We're going to stay right where I go, Officer Elliott would be in spotlight. Okay, absolutely, well, come on over here and we'll see, um, if we can get a photo op, that would be good. Um, so I'm just going to read a little bit about Officer Elliott. That she's been with the P D for a little over two years and she serves in the Uniform Patrol Division, currently assigned to V Squad. She was recently trained to be one of our field training officers based on her performance and her leadership qualities. Officer Elliott works diligently every day to ensure that the mission and the goals of the Oxford Police Department are met. Officer Elliott has a total of more than twenty-five felony charges and twenty-five misdemeanor charges and one hundred and five charges by citation. She is a dedicated officer and team player who deserves this year award for her outstanding performance, superior dedication, and positive attitude throughout the past year. And we, the City of Oxford, not just the board, not just the staff, but the community as a whole, thank you for your service and congratulate you on this recognition. And then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bridges after we do this.
Yeah, so what I want to say is, I was looking at TV the other day and they were honoring the police officers who were at the Capitol on January sixth. And I thought about the officers that worked for us because someone stood up and said that when trouble happens, officers run toward it and we run away from it. And I will tell you that, that I have been the recipient. You know, I've been forty years in the court system and I'm telling you, there have been bailiffs that have gotten between me and another person to avoid problems. In fact, had one highway patrolman who literally disarmed a defendant who got a hold of a gun in the courtroom. And that highway patrolman pulled his gun, I, I was shocked. I'm, I'm standing there prosecuting cases and all of a sudden, trooper pulls out his gun and points it at this guy and the guy had a gun. And so I just appreciate what y'all do every day. You put your lives on the line and this is a well deserved award.
And to receive this award at the Crime Stoppers Banquet, we were not able to be there in support of her, so, um, we are just so proud and pleased to help run our force. And we wish you great luck going forward and safety every minute of the day.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Well, I guess I should have not come right around. Now, we would like to recognize the retirement of Marvin Roy Kelly uh, with the Street Department and the Public Works Department. And he has been our knuckle boom operator and I would like to invite Commissioner Bullock and Roger Elliott, who is his supervisor, and Stephen Blasko, I saw you a minute ago. There you are, and, um, Roy, please come forward.
Yes.
Five weeks, really time for this. Million times as you've gone by. So, this is the guy who gets rid of all the really big stuff. Whether it's, uh, unwind. Ben, the piece of furniture, large tree limbs. I think, uh, you know, yeah, when trees have, we've sometimes had trees falling over and they go into the street and they're just huge. And this is the guy that comes and takes care of, um, getting it out of the way. And, uh, so seven years is not long enough for us, but we know you're probably doing a little happy dance.
In a way, yeah. I wish I could stay long, but I, uh, under circumstances at home.
Well, we, um, it's always a great thing when you're able to celebrate somebody's retirement. And, uh, so what I'd like to do is I'm going to give this to Commissioner Bullock to read and then say a few words and then we'll let, um, Mr. Riley, a few words.
And it reads, congratulations on your retirement presented to Marvin Kelly. Soon time there will be Roy.
Yeah.
And to say your appreciation for your dedicated years of service with the City of Oxford. We hope that you enjoy your well deserved retirement. And this is September eighth, two thousand fifteen, December the thirtieth, so we've got a few more days. Two thousand twenty-two. Uh, several times it's been said that the work of the, uh, Public Works area sort of goes behind the scene and not eats you the spot. But when Roy comes rolling down the road with that knuckle in the truck, it's hard to miss. But while he's been doing that for seven years, well, he has established a reputation of being dependable, hardworking, and doing a good job every day. And from what I hear from your bosses, not complaining. So that's a, a special person he is. We appreciate your service. We thank you for all that you've done for the city and we wish you the best in your retirement.
Hey, so Mr. Riley, would you like to say a few words about this great employee?
Yes, he, he's. He's very dependable. He, uh, not only is he running the knuckle boom, but he's also good working with concrete and asphalt as well. You know, we do more things and just, uh, for the city, other than just picking up debris. You know, but he's, uh, overall, he's a well rounded individual and very needed individual. Again, thank you for your service.
And I know what needed means, means, yeah, we're going to use you every day. December thirtieth and we can be praying we can find somebody as solid and responsive and reliable.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, we'll wait for our clerk to move the place. And we move on. No.
Go, one more.
Oh my God.
It's okay, feel free.
Well, no, I, that, I am sorry, um, hang on. I think I'd like to invite the entire board to come around. So, this is a bittersweet moment for us.
Uh, we do need you.
I heard bored, I didn't need you.
That's right, we need Alan. Probably actually wouldn't have minded if I would have glossed right over this fifth, um, agenda. Uh, so please do come around. It seems appropriate that we should all be up here with you because even though I bother you most probably.
Why, you're next.
There, there you go. Uh, it's, it's a group effort. So, uh, everybody knows, we've had a city manager for five years and seven months who has worked diligently and hard and conscientiously for the city. And he's brought tremendous stability, uh, to this community after a somewhat rocky time. We had a number of city managers and a number of interim city managers. And Alan came in in twenty seventeen, in May of twenty seventeen, um, to a rather tumultuous board meeting. And we were a little bit worried that he might not come back to actually show up for work and, and he wasn't living in town yet, had driven up to this board meeting in May and we thought he's not going to come back and, uh, sign his contract with us. So, so we were really glad that he did. Uh, I would like to point out, Ron came on the board when I did it in two thousand nine and the city had been spending a lot of money. Uh, um, lots of good things in our fund balance, if I recall correctly, when we got on board it was eleven percent of, um, the budget. And, uh, the local government commission in North Carolina recommends that, uh, for cities under ten thousand, that we have at least sixty-five percent or more. So eleven percent was way down. So by the time Alan came, we had gotten that up to twenty-nine percent. So we were improving things, but it was under Alan that with his careful, judicious, and I know for many in the community and many department heads frustrating attention to detail in every penny, that he managed to accumulate a fund balance for the city, um, that is fifty-nine percent of the general, uh, fund budget rather than twenty. So he boosted it a lot. And so a lot of people might think, well, that's a big pot of money we can just go through. But that pot of money was there when COVID hit and all kinds of things stopped. And there's a reason why there's a recommendation from the local government commission about how much you should have socked away. It is so that if there is a natural disaster, if some terrible calamity happens, that the city can continue to function, we can continue to pay our employees, we can continue to run the water and take care of the wastewater, clean the streets and do the things that need to be done because in case revenue stops, we have savings built up that will enable us to continue. And so it's a huge big deal that Alan did that for us and put the city on really stable, strong financial footing, which I hope will be appealing to anybody that's looking for a city manager job. Um, that they will think this, this place is in pretty good shape. I don't have to rescue it from itself, which believe it or not, can happen a lot. So, um, those are my words for Alan. We have a little gift basket for you. Uh, they are, um, mostly consumable, so if you don't like them, somebody in your family might.
There's chocolate, I believe.
But we don't, I'm not sure we have chocolate in there, but we have other things. And we have a few non consumable things that will remind you of Oxford. Oxford is on the map on this little cutting board. We've got a little hot sauce thing in a tray with peppers on it. So that's my bit, but I would like to ask board members if there's anything that you would like to add.
Well, I'll start because I've been up here saying something. The one thing that I, I was concerned about was, uh, lifting the morale of our employees. Um, because the city managers we had previously had, there was really a, a, a lowering of the morale of our city employees. And I was hopeful that we would get someone who could bring our employees together, get them excited about working for the city and, 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 and just make it a more pleasurable thing to work for the city. And Alan, you did that. You improved the morale of our employees. Certainly, um, the financial stability of the city is a very important thing. Um, what I like about you also is your professionalism. You know, I cannot think of one time you and I have had crosswords. I mean, you know, we've talked about things, but you've always been very professional with me, um, even when we didn't agree. You know, I like the way you handle, uh, talking with individuals who may have a different view about something. And that's not an easy thing to always do. And to just work with all these personalities is just an amazing thing that you have been able to do. And, you know, and I for one, wish you were not leaving now. You know, I, I do, you have started a lot of good things. I think the city is moving in a good, positive direction. And for someone to be able to come in and keep that momentum, it's not going to be an easy task. But I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. I know you want to spend more time with family. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm just looking forward to that day when I can do the same thing. But thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Alan, that night in May, I know you sat up there and looked like a deer that had gotten hit by headlights. Because that wasn't an easy night. And if I were you, I would, if I were you, I would have went back there and made a little bit and kept right on going. But it took courage, professionalism, and a desire. And you've shown all of that since you've been here, uh, with us in Oxford. Um, to piggyback on Quan, your door was always open. Your mannerism was always professional. You're going to be greatly missed. Um, whoever steps in your shoes, our expectations are high now. You know, I mean, you know, we up there now, so we're expecting that. But I bid you a great retirement, a lot of fishing, and, and I know your wife's got a honey do this, so get ready. But thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Alan, of course, as Commissioner Bridges said, dealing with the various personalities and issues is not an easy task to do. But you did that well. Well, I was able to watch Alan in a different scene with some friends right up the road as we dealt with some water issues. And when you're working with a group that has a strong tendency to just talk, talk, talk and not do anything, I would come out there frustrated to the point that I'd chuck, I'd look over and Alan would go, it's okay, we, we're going to get it, we're going to be there. And at times he would interject a thought that would break up a stalemate or get some motion going. So a lot of credit goes to his work subtly at times, more openly at times. But the work he did in getting this stuff going and the expansion and improvement of the wa, of the water treatment plant amazed me and his ability to deal interagency as well as with people. So I want to make sure of that to recognize and as the others, I wish you the best.
Thank you, sir.
I, um, have always been the financial person in, in all the endeavors that I've had. Not that I have, you know, a financial background or anything, but I just love that. I remember campaigning and I was talking to Alan about it and, anyway, his wife was there, she said, she's going to be on your team. Anyway, and so I was just so tickled pink to, to be appointed to the, the financial board and stuff and then to, to, to embrace it and to follow it and to better understand it. I really appreciate the leadership that you've given to this community. And in my short time here, you know, COVID interrupted, the learning curve here and all of that. But it is just absolutely phenomenal, the amount of attention that has been given to the City of Oxford budget that a layperson and can, and then this layperson can teach her children, these are the line items, this is what we did and this is where the money went and this is how much. I mean, and, and, and to make all of that work, it, it is just an honor to have been able to, to follow your lead and to, to better understand that and appreciate it. I mean, so the shape that you, you were leaving us in, we thank you, I thank you. Um, but I'm very sad that you're leaving at this point. You know, I'm, you, we've had this conversation and I don't think we need to have it again. But anyway, I, I really will miss you, Alan.
I miss you as well, I really will. I want to know what, how many fishing trips you got planned? I want to know what, how many fishing trips you got planned?
None in January, February.
Happy that, quite a few, quite a few.
Best of luck and catch them all.
Thank you, I appreciate it very, very much.
I think everybody's pretty much said everything, you know. Just wanted to say thank you, it's been a pleasure being to know you this past year. I hope I haven't been a terrible neighbor sitting beside you as a vegan. And, yeah, just thank you for all you've done for the city. You know, I've, I've been very impressed with all the stuff that you do, Alan. So we're, we're definitely in this year.
We are indeed. I know that, as I said earlier, that, that I have nattered after Alan more than he would like. I remember when he came in and he said, you know, I've had one really great year in my twenty-seven years of experience. And one, one really great mayor in my twenty-seven years of experience. And that mayor, after he was elected, said, I'll see you at the board meeting. And unfortunately, that is, that is not me. No, that is not, that is not me. But I have appreciated you from top to bottom in so many different ways. And we, I can't remember who it was that said we don't always agree, maybe it was Commissioner Bridges, and we don't always agree. But you get stretched when you have conversations with people that you don't agree with. Just surrounding yourself with people that think just like you do never helps any of us grow. So we just really thank you so much, Alan. I didn't mention this earlier, did not want a reception and wanted just to be recognized at tonight's meeting. That's why we didn't do a bigger to-do for him. But please do, and then we have something else after this, but please do give him a huge round of applause. We need to get closer together and. Oh, yeah, actually we do, but there's more actually after. So let, come on in, folks, if you don't mind. So Cindy can get a little picture and, and then.
Do you want to give us applause?
No, no.
Excuse me.
Okay, great. And I believe now there's a follow-up and then you can say something. That Cindy's got stashed from the stack, am I correct? Yes, so, because, you know, consumables are not automatically sufficient to the task. Like, you don't have to find many of them, and that's what's happening.
Little room in where I live, girl, there's all of my wife's stuff. My wife retired recently as well.
Oh, wow.
She was a teacher for twenty years, and you can imagine the school supplies she gave away during her time.
And they've done that.
Yeah, she's a bit of a hoarder, just doesn't like to throw anything away.
This is from your stamp.
Awesome. I will put that to good use, I am sure.
So you do have to tell folks what that is.
It's a fishing rod.
And real, so.
And I will put them to good use.
For the ocean.
And I do want to say thank you to everyone. It is, it is bittersweet, like I said in the paper last week that was critically placed in the obituaries.
Yes.
But enough about that. But it is bittersweet. And I was thinking, coming to the meeting tonight, and I've been coming to board meetings since nineteen eighty-six, when I started as an intern at the City of Hickory, and started the little board meetings there. Can't tell you how many board meetings that I have been to in the course of my career. But it just becomes a part of you. Public service is a calling and it should be for people that really understand what public service and being a public servant truly means. I've said it before and I'll say it again, I wish that I would have found, or Oxford would have found me sooner in my career. And because Oxford has been very good to me, I've enjoyed my time here at Oxford. And Oxford will remain very near and dear to my heart through the rest of my time here on earth. And I'll look back on this time very fondly. Oxford is, like I've said before, poised for a lot of success. Oxford is on the precipice of enjoying even more growth and success here in sleepy old Oxford. You're going to see a lot of things happening that will transform Oxford hopefully for good. It's been a lot of effort. You know, putting behind the scenes, you mentioned, you know, the water, water's the lifeblood of the community. If you don't have water, you cannot grow, there is absolutely no way. And with the work that's, you know, going on in the streets, soon to hopefully be under the streets and paid, we're setting the stage for that growth and development coming to Oxford and for Oxford to prosper. You know, the tax rate in Oxford and the Bramble County is significant. It's third or fourth highest in the state in North Carolina. And, you know, I'd always hope that the growth coming to Oxford, that, you know, we could do what we could do and reduce that over time and the tax burden on the citizens. One of the proudest things that I have in my career is I've put together thirty-two municipal budgets in my time and never recommended a single tax increase. And I'm very proud of that, I'm very proud of the work that I've done in Oxford. I'm very grateful. And I'll leave it at that, except to say thank you to, to the board members here. These folks are one of the best boards that I have worked with in over thirty years. A lot of times, you, you don't get that. And that repeats itself across the state in many circumstances and instances. I've seen today where a manager of William Chapel Hill resigned, is today. And he's gone at the end of the week after that, it's kind of a, and that happens. Elizabeth City's now on the, the list for the, you know, the government finance officers and all that sort of thing. Or the Mr. Hald, who takes care of our pension plan, he's on, they're on his list now. So there's a lot of things that, you know, take place behind the scenes that if they're not done properly, lead you into problems. And Oxford doesn't have that. Oxford is extremely well poised to be successful. You've got great employees, I want to thank the staff. There's some of the finest and most caring individuals that I've had the pleasure to work with. Treat them well, treat them well. You've seen just how difficult that it is to attract and retain talented individuals. It's tough out there right now, it really is. And this is kind of a specialty niche that a lot of people are not getting into anymore for a number of reasons. But it's, it's not an easy job, it really isn't. Being a city manager is not an easy job. I wish I'd taken more psychology courses in college. But you learn it as you go, or you just get weeded out in the process. But I want to thank the board, I want to thank the staff, I want to thank the citizens of the City of Oxford for allowing me to serve in this capacity for this, for this longer. And again, it is bittersweet. I could stay and continue to go on, but, you know, you kind of know when it's time. My parents are approaching ninety now and they need some assistance. And my wife is retired and, you know, you kind of know when it's time.
Yeah.
Um, we saw the football coach that hit sixty-one and died. You know, I'll turn sixty this fall and you just wonder, you know, when is enough enough? And that's what I'm hoping to do, is get a little bit of enjoyment out of life, you know, outside of the work environment. And, you know, make that decision. And I know that the city will move forward. No one is irreplaceable, including me. But, you know, the city is well, well poised to move forward. I just hope that whoever you do appoint to the next city manager's position, you allow him the freedom that I've had to work in, in the capacity that is needed and is necessary. You know, I always tell people, hire good people, give them the expectations of the job and let them do the job. And they'll work. And if you support them and, you know, don't look over their shoulder constantly and down in the weeds with them, telling them what to do, you'll be surprised. And the work that you can get out of them and the innovation that you'll get from those people. And you have people like that here. But be good to your people and they'll be good to you and this community. And again, thank you all so much, I appreciate it very, very much.
More than you know.
Three cheers. So we hope that you will use that a lot.
I certainly will.
Did I slap that?
One more.
Gracious.
This is kind of monumental, you said nineteen eighty-six with your first board meeting? And so this is your last board meeting ever? And I bet you're not gonna be going to any board meetings just for the fun of it.
No, probably not, so there will likely be a yard sale on suits and ties and shoes. That's where at some point in time.
Oh, that is awesome. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that, we will move forward to our public hearing portion of the agenda. And we have.
Public comment.
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 Correct, thank you, I apologize. That's because I had turned the page and it said public hearing and we have public comment, thank you, madam. I invite Eddie McCoy to come forward. And please state your name and address for the record when you get to the podium and the topic that you would like to discuss.
Good afternoon, I'm Eddie McCoy, four zero eight Kingsborough Street. What I'm gonna talk about, it just made my speech and what I want to talk about more easy. I want to talk about this new city manager or what we will be looking and hopeful in the future of a city manager. I listened to everybody make a good speech tonight, and they did real well, the board members. So I think that with the experience they got, I think that they will, hopeful that they will take their time and don't be hesitant to get a new city manager. Take one, two, three. It'll take about three months at least. And my concern, I know it don't mean nothing, but I pay taxes and I'm a citizen and it's the only time I can speak is when I come before the board. And I know that by they come here speaking, it finally paid off. Because a gentleman that pick up trash told me, don't forget the axe, to let him know that he need a raise. So it made me feel good today that if I keep coming, somebody is not in this room is listening. What I would like, I would like for this board to pick a city manager that has kids in school. That's a good guideline to let you know that that individual wants to stay and have input in the city and have some, they have some, some, they have some, they got some, they got, you understand what I'm saying? They have some, they're paying taxes and they're concerned about the city. And I would like for someone that's not old. And that's why I say, I'm not discriminating, I say has your kids in school. And they have some, they will be, they might stay for a while. And they're being sincere and they'll look at the city and they can grow with the city, with your ideas. And won't know everything. If you get somebody that is old and got a lot of experience, you can't teach an old dog new tricks. But if you get a, a younger guy, you gentleman's age, you know. And, and I think we will move along and we will be, we'll be, we'll be happy that we tried to do the best we could. But I think we need to listen to citizens and ask them what do they think about a new city manager? Every time we got a city manager, you know, I, I don't know, I, I can't say, I didn't have an input in because you don't, you know, you don't want me to tell you what you want, but I want, I'm telling you now. But I feel, I would feel comfortable if we do that. And I think that if we work with the department and work with department heads and let them have an input. Because if you get a HR, they, we want somebody to hire, just look to everybody. You, you, you understand what I'm saying, everybody. We don't, this, we won't look at, and when they bring their, who they choice or who they pick, all different nationalities that come before you. Blue, black, pink, Spanish, Puerto Rican, anybody, as many, let, let, pick, say bring me five of all the nationality. Don't come with, I picked the best qualified, qualified person. That, I'm tired of that. That's that old talk, it's the best qualified person. They gonna be qualified anyway because they gonna have experience, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCoy. Okay, that, now we move forward to the public hearing portion of our agenda. And we have item A, hold a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding the closeout of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG number seventeen dash C dash twenty-nine ninety-four. And we will be having a presentation from our planning director, Cheryl Hart.
We just wanted to go with some facts for this required public hearing in terms of closing it out. So just to start with the background, on February the thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the City of Oxford was awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the aim to develop block grant funds from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, more economic development division, or RED, to rehabilitate up to nine single-family homes. All the high-end title homes scattered throughout the city. No one of the funds were required or spent in this project. And so the outcomes, the city has rehabilitated five single-family homes. Of the original nine homes identified in the grant application, three owners passed away. And one house was determined to need more repairs than the grant was able to address. The city then placed the remaining five houses up and bid with the option that another or other homes could be identified if funds were available. However, the cost of the repairs for the remaining five houses utilized all the rent funds. The drastic rise in the construction materials and labor costs during the pandemic was largely the cause of, of this. And the average cost per house was approximately one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars per house. Please understand that the program requires comprehensive repairs to each home. Program guidelines require that the entire house must be brought up to code, including handicap accessibility if needed, lip, face, abatement, and historical district requirements. The city was not allowed to only make partial improvements. For each house rehabilitated, the city placed an eight-year lien and deed of trust on the property to secure the fund spend. That was a zero percent interest loan with more payments that decreases proportionately. And each year, so at the end of the eight-year period, the lien is automatically forgiven. The city does have the authority to cancel the liens in the case of death of a homeowner for financial hardship. The final cost of the project was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The project is completed, the red staff visited the city to inspect some homes in October. And at some point, RED will visit the city again to do a compliance audit on the grant. So the required actions, state and federal regulations require that the city conduct a public hearing at the close of the CDBG project to allow citizens to make comments or ask questions. No action is required by the board after the public hearing. If there are any questions, copies of the response. after the public hearing. If there are any questions, copies of the responses have to be submitted to RED. The closeout documents will be sent to RED after the limits of the budget amount are approved in the January. That's all I have. And I think I sent some pictures of the exterior of the two houses that I felt was included in the grant.
You did, and I was wondering if you could just tell us, uh, a little bit more about, so you sent us the pictures of a house at one seventeen Leake Avenue and another at five oh six Henderson Street, and I was wondering if-
Yeah, those were the, um, houses that you could see the exterior change, particularly with Leake Avenue. Um, that house needed the most modifications. Um, an extra wide wheelchair ramp was necessary for access to the occupant. And to the side door, you probably can't see it on that picture. We couldn't get it, that an extra wide door was also needed. And you see the bottom side and the windows that were replaced. And then it was a ton of work on the inside, particularly the balcony modification, and the doors extra wide. And on the other one, um, you see that I thought the fancy wheelchair ramp was necessary because of the elevations, and of course, new windows were put in. So, um, those were the two that we-
So did you, did I hear you? You said new windows were put in on the house?
As well, yes. And so those were the two where you could actually see the exterior modification, but most of them require extensive interior and structural types of rehabilitation.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, Ms. Hart, I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear when you said the final cost of the project, CDBG grant was-
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, which we were awarded.
So with that presentation, do any board members have any questions, further questions for Ms. Hart before we open up the public hearing?
Mayor, I would like to add that we got notification last month of receiving nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars more for the same program to do more work here in the city of Oxford. So there's a hope out there for others to be a part of this program to rehabilitate and fix up houses here in the city of Oxford. So I'm sure that Cheryl and her staff will be soon disseminating information publicly in regards to that program and how people can apply.
Excellent. Thank you. I think, I think before we open the hearing, we do need to give a round of applause. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not insignificant, especially when it goes towards homes that people would have no other way of getting the needed improvement. So we really appreciate your work on that. With that, I'll open the public hearing and invite anybody to the section to my right to come forward to speak on this issue. Okay. Anybody in the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue?
This is the grant money?
Uh, it is about the project that, that Ms. Hart just discussed that she's closing out. So it's a seven hundred and fifty thousand that, uh, she used for the five homes.
I just want to know, uh, it's not rental property, it's not-
They were all owner-occupied.
They own them. The one you did on Leake Street, I agree, I don't care how much money you spent. I agree on that. That, that was needed. And, uh, that, that lady needed help. And, uh, they been paying taxes and everything. She was a citizen. She was a good citizen. She worked at Van Scranton Community College, very intelligent lady. Just get, you know, life just call her with her. But she's a very smart lady. She worked with kids at the library. She tutored always. A lot of the Spanish people that came here, they couldn't read and write, and knew math and anything. So she spent a lot of time in the library with, with students like that, kids like that, but they helped call her with her. But that, I appreciate y'all doing that. Uh, you know, that was money well spent, and she deserved it. And I hope she can continue to find people like that, that, that were appreciated and needed and deserve the money. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCoy. And I, I do think that is Ms. Hart's goal. Uh, anybody else in the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Anybody in this section to our left that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anybody, last call, regardless of where you're sitting, that would like to come forward to speak on this? Okay. Well then, with no further comments, I declare the public hearing closed. And, uh, that, uh, there is no action that we need to do on this, other than to hold a public hearing. And, um, Ms. Hart, I know I sent you a message about this and I've already forgotten. So after this, all you have to do is close out the final accounting and send that into the Rural Economic Development Division. Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you very much for your comments, Mr. McCoy. And with that, we will move forward to item five A, which is to consider adopting the agenda and the regular board meeting dates for two thousand and twenty-three. The city is continuing the practice of setting the agenda and regular board meeting dates for the coming year. You have support information in attachment five A. And, uh, on that, you'll see that Tuesday, January third, and Tuesday, September fifth are have moved from the, for the agenda meeting, have moved from the traditional Monday before the board meeting because of holidays. Uh, and the recommended action, of course, is that we adopt the agenda as, uh, the dates for the agenda and regular board meetings as presented. On your attachment, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protamany. Discussion. All in favor of adopting of, um, the motion signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Uh, item B, as we said earlier, was moved, uh, to Monday, December fifth, and has been handled. Item C, consider approving the capital project ordinance for the Car Lake Water Treatment Plant Improvement and Expansion Project. The city was awarded five million dollars by the Division of Water Infrastructure for the Car Lake Water Treatment Plant Improvement and Expansion Project. This project is anticipated to take three years to construct and must have a capital project ordinance to meet state requirements for multi-year projects. And I would like to point out that of the five million dollars, five hundred thousand of it is, uh, principal forgiveness, which is the equivalent to a grant and is therefore, uh, not insignificant. Staff recommends that the board adopt a cap, capital project ordinance in order to proceed with the Car Lake Water Treatment Plant Improvement and Expansion Project over multiple years. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item D, consider approving a budget amendment for the Phase Five Sewer Improvement Capital Water Project. The adopted city budget did not include the Phase Five Sewer Improvement Capital Water Project that the Division of Water Infrastructure funded in the spring round. The proposed budget amendment will show on the attach, a budget amendment voucher, the five hundred thousand for engineering design will come from fund balance. When the city starts construction, uh, the Division of Water Infrastructure will reimburse the city for all engineering fees spent in advance and roll it into the nine million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollar grant and loan amount for the project. And you have support information in, uh, attachment five D. And do not, it's not, this, this was also a grant and loan. We do not have our, um, city engineer with us. Mr. Thornton, do you recall how much of this was grant?
I don't specifically, mayor. I'm sorry. I don't have that.
But it is not, it is not a hundred percent loan.
Not totally one hundred percent loan. There is some grant or principal forgiveness associated with that. I guess the five hundred thousand as well, I do believe.
Just to point out our hardworking staff again, that it's quite likely that between these two agenda items, that represents a savings of a million dollars for our, uh, water and sewer customers. So the recommended action is that we approve the budget amendments for a total of five hundred thousand in the Phase Five Division of Water Infrastructure Sewer Improvements to, uh, pay for engineering design upfront. But what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gilreth. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item E, consider approving a resolution for new median on College Street starting just north of Watkins Street and extending to Alexandra Street. The board previously approved the two thousand and eighteen water and two thousand and eighteen sewer line improvement projects with the alternatives, including creating a median to install the utilities within. The board held a public hearing via Zoom to allow the input of property owners, especially those in the impacted area. The overwhelming majority of the participants were in favor of the median. The board also approved the addition of streetlights in the median for ambiance. The median will reduce the impact on the trees of Col, on College Street, which would have been substantial if the digging had been done right at the curbside, reduce the cost of utility installations by reducing the amount of asphalt that needs to be replaced, and create a landscape median as you get closer to downtown, as you're approaching from the north. The resolution wording essentially captures this explanation, just in resolution form. And the recommended action is that staff recommends the board pass the resolution to create a median on College Street to install the two thousand and eighteen water and sewer improvement lines and add streetlights, historic streetlights for ambiance. It will start just north of Watkins Street and extend to Alexandra Street. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion there too? All in favor, the motion signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And I think everybody involved in that project, I think, will be quite exciting when it is completed. And I know the city manager, um, worked to enable us to have nice streetlights to add to the seal. So thank you very much. Item F, consider suspending the COVID vaccine mandate for new hires. Currently, in order to be employed by the city of Oxford, all newly hired employees of the city must provide proof of full and complete vaccination for COVID-nineteen. And you have an information in staff, in attachment five F, which is, uh, a staff report. Recommended action is that the Oxford Board of Commissioners suspend the vaccine mandate for new hires. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Khan. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, I don't know if I'm, I'm a scaredy cat or what. But, you know, I am not convinced that we are beyond, um, this COVID issue. Um, you know, I know that it has gotten better, question about it, with vaccines and, um, folks masking up. Um, it has certainly gotten better. But my major concern is probably individuals who are, uh, first responders, police officers who come in contact with the public a bunch, um, as well as come into our court system, um, to handle their cases that they are investigating. And so, um, and, and, and I know that I heard something on the national television that, um, there is a bit of a resurgence, resurgence, um, relative to young people, um, um, kids, the, um, hospitals are filling up. And I know it's not just COVID. Um, I think they mentioned it, it's COVID plus some, some other, um, uh, viruses. And, and, and so, I just wanted to express that, um, certainly I come in contact with a lot of law enforcement officers in our court system. And, and, and every day, they're out in the public. Um, and, and, you know, to be quite honest with you, I'm, I'm concerned about their family, you know, when they go home at night. Um, you know, those officers that have, um, children, um, if they're not protected, um, they could very well create a problem in their own home. And, and, and I just have an uneasy feeling relative, it may not be with all employees, even though, you know, I mean, I, I would support it for all employees. But I think it's more significant to me when it comes to first responders who respond to accidents, you know, respond to domestic violence and, and other things. They have no clue what they're going into. And, um, and I think for the safety of their families, as well as their coworkers, um, I'm not sure that it's a good move to suspend, um, this, um, COVID condition. I, I just wanted to express that.
I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with, um, Commissioner Bridges. And I think in, um, I thought that maybe we could leave it, but ask for a waiver that they acknowledge that we really want you to get it. But if you really, really choose not to, for whatever your reasons may be, just acknowledge that. And you, you, we, we offered it and it was available to you, but you, you have the right to choose not to do it. But while I'm like, I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Commissioner Bridges.
Can we change the wording to the point that it's recommended but not required?
I would. I would support that.
Yes.
And, uh, I would, I will amend my motion to include that language.
Right.
I, uh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Commissioner Khan finish and then go back to Commissioner Bridges?
I, um, I wholeheartedly agree. I am fully backed, uh, four times. I got all, I, you know, as requirement for some of the work I do, having to go into some federal facilities, I gotta get all manner shots. Uh, to me, it's not a, a big deal. Um, I think as I've expressed to my colleagues in the past, it's unfortunate that this was politicized in the way that it was. Um, that there is a stigma around these types of things. But I understand equally that people have concerns. I fully believe that all municipalities and all private organizations and so forth should highly encourage and recommend, uh, flu shots, any other type of vaccination that, you know, would benefit, uh, the public and the labor force in general. But, um, sometimes you have to evaluate your approach in terms of carrot versus stick. Um, if it is a barrier to entry for, um, for workers, then, you know, that's, that's a problem as well. I'm in support of, I'm in support of, of not requiring the vaccine as a condition of employment, uh, particularly since it's, we have some gaps there otherwise in terms of it's not required for everyone. It's, it's interesting, you know, we're, we're all learning and navigating this together and figuring out how to make this work, you know, not just the city of Oxford. So I, I would absolutely encourage us to, um, as part of our policies, that city staff highly encourage, recommend, uh, the COVID-nineteen vaccinations as well as flu shots, as probably they already do, um, and find ways to encourage those to happen, moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Khan. Commissioner Bridges, you have more to add?
Yeah. The only, um, thing I was gonna inquire about is, it seems to me when we were first talking about this that if an employee, um, did not want to take the vaccine, then there were other requirements of testing. Are, are, are we not going to do that? I mean, um, I mean, I'm not, I'm just asking the question because I remember discussions about if an employee made the decision not to take it, that there would be a condition relative to testing. Or is that something that's on the table?
And, and, and I have a follow-up question to that also because I, um, was tested to attend a meeting and was amazed at how my insurance- Because I was tested to attend a meeting and was amazed at how my insurance covered it. And I ended up with a bill that had I known I was gonna end up with this bill, I would not have participated in that activity. And I'm wondering, what was the financial hit from the city with regards to additional testing that, that people maybe, maybe had to, to go get because they refused to get COVID? And, and how did that impact us financially? And, and, and what does it really look like? Because I was, I was floored when, when I ended up with the unnecessary bill in my mind.
I think I'm gonna toss it to the manager, but I am gonna say I believe, you know, during the COVID period, the federal government was kind of covering the cost of all the tests. And so we could shoot people up to Hilltop and they were mailing out the COVID tests. And, and that has shifted. So for example, on Medicare.
But mine was doing COVID.
So I'm gonna.
You are correct.
Toss it to the manager.
I don't know that it cost the city anything as far as actual expense and having the test performed. During the time that the governor had declared a state of emergency, they were covered. The tests were covered, you can test for free, you know, citizen or anyone else. When we got out of that period of time, then the city backed off of the making people go every week or every day or whatever that was, because then they would have to bear the expense of it's so doing.
So we've had a lot of comments on this end. I wanna make sure, any, any comments from folks down here?
I'm in agreement with Ron in changing the wording. The wording of it. Then you give them the choice. They're being hired with a choice and not a mandate.
Yep.
And.
And it could be available to them. I mean, it needs to be available.
And I, I think, and I suspect, I, and I know, is Melissa still here? Is she out? No, she's out.
She's out.
That's right. You know, there's been some comments about messaging and so on. Mayor Protem brought up RSV, so I think one thing would be just to encourage our HR director to do regular communications with staff, to remind them of the opportunities that they have for flu vaccine and so on through our own coverage. And, and even though I suspect anybody who doesn't wanna test is also not interested in wearing a mask, I, I think the, the impression I get from the board is we would like it conveyed to new hires, that it, it really is a concern specifically, and I think Commissioner Bridges was very eloquent in how he expressed his concerns for those public safety and other members of the staff that are doing direct interfacing with the public in all kinds of circumstances without any control over who they're going to engage with or how distant they're going to be able to remain. To just remind folks that we want them to be safe, that we care about them, and to encourage masking again, not requiring, but as a protective thing perhaps for them. Just, just to, for Melissa to convey and department heads to staff that this is about their safety, not about muscling them. So with that, any further commentary?
Yep, you know, we probably need to also be mindful too that Oxford is a, full of citizens that are on or in that high-risk category too. I mean, because we have a higher population of supposedly elderly people, you know, in, in, in our community. And in order for us to serve or anyone to serve people in Oxford, you have to take that into consideration and be mindful of that. I mean, so it is, it is dire that, that we not contribute to, to, to our families, to ourselves, or members in the community that we're gonna be serving.
Right.
I mean, so it's like, wow.
I think so, but I think at this time, we've noticed that we might be missing out. Everybody's struggling with hiring and there's some opportunity to hire some capable folks in a variety of positions that we may not be able to get if we continue with the mandate. So with, yes, sir, I apologize.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna simply say, I do appreciate the, the added language. That's better in my, in terms of the way I feel. I don't know if it changes my position, but I do, I'm, I'm thankful that somebody thought about, you know, enhancing the language. And maybe we can get people to take serious what we're confronting here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
I'll say something, I wanted to say something.
Yes, sir.
So I don't think we've really discussed, you know, why we're approaching this at this time. I think it's important for everybody to know that it seems like we're losing out on qualified candidates for employment with the city and due to all the gaps in all the departments. I think, you know, this hasn't been an easy decision, but, you know, we, we definitely have needs. And if we're losing out on people that can help the city and do a good job for us, I think this is definitely something we need to consider.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, all in favor of Commissioner Khan's motion to encourage, recommend, but not require COVID vaccines for new mandates, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign?
No.
Okay, that motion carries six to one. And.
Five to one.
Five to one. Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the thoughtful discussion. Thank you very much to each of you. And with that, we move forward to the consent agenda, which is to accept the November twenty twenty-two finance report by our Finance Director Haakum and the meeting minutes from November seventh and November fifteenth. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem, any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And we have some reminders that our offices will be closed for the Christmas holiday on Thursday, the twenty-second, and Friday, the twenty-third, and Monday, the twenty-sixth. That is going to be a festive break for our staff and everyone. And then we will be closed again on New Year's Day, which is Monday, January twenty, January second. And we will assemble on the third for our agenda meeting, which is Tuesday. And is there, I'd like to ask members, are there any comments, additional comments, Commissioner Khan?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Gilreath?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Bridges?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Mayor Protem?
If you all remember in our meeting, I brought up us contacting the league, the league about an interim. And we've gotten information and we've gotten one person. What I want tonight is just a date that we can set to meet with this person. This will be in a closed session. Tonight is just a date. A date, nothing about who he is or anything. He's available Thursday and Friday of this week and Monday and Wednesday of next week. Melissa does not have the time he's available. And I made it, I'm known to Melissa, I was worried about Commissioner Bridges' time, you know, considering your time. So if you all can get with us ASAP on your availability on either Thursday and Fri- Thursday or Friday of this week or Monday or Wednesday of next week, so we can.
Monday or Wednesday.
Monday or Wednesday of next week.
Okay.
So that we can meet with this person.
Are we, you know, are people, Commissioner Bridges, you need to go back to your office calendar?
Yeah, Thursday and Friday of this week would not be good for me.
Okay.
I, I have hearings scheduled that I have to.
Okay, but Monday.
But, but next, the following week, I can promise.
Okay. Do you?
Monday or Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Wide open.
Okay.
Wide open for you, Commissioner Lumpkins?
Uh, I don't have my calendar, but this should work.
Monday or Wednesday?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we shoot for Wednesday because it's a little further away. Commissioner Khan and Gilreath, what are your thoughts?
I'm covering for some of my staff at work who are taking holiday breaks. So my schedule is jam-packed most every day. I would say the ti- I'm happy to make Wednesday work. Middle of the day would be really hard, so it'd be like early in the morning or it would be probably post, post five PM, like a five, five-thirty, something like that.
Could you do a call-in?
Potential, if you, if you will allow me till tomorrow morning to see if I have anything that I can move around and give you some options other than just sort of guessing. I'll, I will see what I can adjust and give you some blocks of time that would be sufficient or potential phone options, depending upon what I need to do to cover for my team.
Okay, excellent. And Commissioner Bridges, if we were looking at Wednesday time, normally you're trying to go in the middle of the day. Would there be a chance with Commissioner Khan's schedule that you could maybe go towards the end of the day? Would that be, is there a chance you would be wrapped up by then?
Yeah, like after two-thirty, three o'clock.
Okay.
I could probably.
Um, so.
We heard from everybody but Commissioner Gilreath.
I, I, I don't have my calendar. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here playing back everything that I know that's there and I can't, I can't keep it straight.
So, and, and that's okay, but at least we've had some things put on the table. But, you know, Commissioner Khan, you can look and see what you've got, and Gilreath, and Lumpkins, and everybody. But right now, we're looking more towards Wednesday afternoon after two-thirty as probably being the best fit.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so when you go home, check your stuff and excellent. Thank you very much.
And just send the response to.
Melissa.
Melissa.
Ron, that was all.
Do we need to respond if we've indicated tonight with legal?
If she don't hear from you, that means that me and you are good.
Right, okay.
Only Commissioner Khan, Gilreath, and Lumpkin.
I should be okay.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. And so this would be a special called meeting of the board in closed session.
In closed session.
Personnel. Yes, excellent. So headed on, you said your, Commissioner Book, anything from you?
I'm good.
Commissioner Lumpkins?
Um, I'm, I'm good, but I just wanted to, you know, mention the conference and plan meeting that we had last week. I thought that went well and I, you know, I appreciated hearing everybody's views and I was happy to see the progress on, on the project. And I was, you know, I was really impressed with what is, you know, what they've done and the participation by the citizens. And I just wanna, I don't know if there's any more, are there gonna be any more public hearing, like events like it was last week? Is it one more?
At least one more is planned.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, of course, we're not receptive to it. I think we're gonna be able to find more, which of course that's open to the public. And then we're gonna start the joint meeting here.
And then we'll have a public hearing.
Right.
So there would still be, so we'll give time to release the document and make it available so people can have further comments, but I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I just wanna mention that, just encourage everybody to participate where they can to, you know, it's, it's very valuable to hear everybody's feedback on that too.
Right, right. And, and I would like to add to kind of refresh folks' memories that the very beginning of the process was key stakeholder interviews that were held. There, you know, a number of people in the community were interviewed at length over this. And then there were surveys that were distributed. And we actually kept the time open to get survey responses to get a broader range of folks commenting through the survey process. Miss Hart, do you remember, I know we had over two hundred, did we make it over three hundred surveys?
I don't know if we made it over three hundred. I know Melissa pushed it out, let, let it go right on. But we're actually, from the meeting that we held last week, we're actually still taking comments and we'll do it to the prospect review.
Excellent. So before that draft goes out, incorporating the information. And, and I can also say, Commissioner Bullock, I don't know if you were in on that meeting, but there were after the survey, I know you were there last week, but when more comments came in from the surveys, because they extended the time, there were adjustments, significant adjustments made to the language and the goals and the strategies. So it wasn't that they were just coming in and it's like, oh yeah, we'll add these to our numbers. But they've been really paying attention to what they've been hearing from the community, so, um.
And that survey's online, right?
That was online.
So, and it's still open?
I don't, I know, I think the survey is closed.
The surveys are not open, but it is open for comments that was put up.
Okay.
Right. Um, with that, before we head to the manager and the attorney, I have a couple of things. First of all, if any of you read the paper, Thursday's paper, there, uh, were, was the announcement of a lot of arrests by our police department. And so I just wanted to say thank you and hip, hip, hooray. There were, you know, everybody recalls what happened on Piedmont Avenue in October. Two suspects have been arrested in that incident. We have two additional suspects for an incident on November nineteenth and another one from November second. So our folks at the police department are working very hard and we owe them a debt of gratitude and a round of applause, I think. I, I know Commissioner Toby isn't here and this is for his committee, but I would like to say while we're all together, you know, we, last month, I think, was the public hearing on Thorndale, the development at Thorndale. And lots of animated commentary and discussion. And discussion about the width of the roads and parking and so on. And we've heard in other developments discussing townhomes previously and trees. And I, I looked at our UDO and while we have a minimum number of parking spaces in some of these newer developments where they're doing townhomes or narrower streets and narrower lots, there's room for two cars to be parked. But if you have guests, there isn't room for anybody to park. And I've been to, I have some friends in Raleigh that live in townhomes and they have nice, neat little, and actually my daughter, where she lives in her townhome has got several guest visitor parking spaces that are included in the available parking. And so I'm wondering with our planning director's input, if we could consider maybe in the new year, having a planning meeting to look at the UDO that we could require some parking spaces when you're looking at townhomes or places where the streets are narrower and lot sizes are just not the room for any more than two cars to be at a, and so people visiting, there's no place for them really to go. Because I remember one developer saying, no, we don't expect people to park in the street, that's why they're narrow. It's like, okay, well then you need to have room. So I'm hoping this board would be open to that. And also to review, we have a significant section on trees and what's required to be retained. And I've not had a chance to talk about this at length with our planning director, but to make sure that, I think it's ten percent are required to be maintained, but they're, they're all in one place and maybe that doesn't achieve what the intent of the guidance was. So just, I, I don't know, but I'm hoping that we might be able to consider that. And then lastly, I've seen a couple of homes that are on the market, changing hands. And right now, um, they're, you know, the front yard is just mu- you know, just dirt because there's no driveway and it's not great for the neighborhood. because there's no driveway and it's not great for the neighborhood and um not great for the house. And I'm wondering if we can maybe look at, to, you know, obviously, they were built before we had requirements for driveways and I don't wanna, but I know my m- my neighbor down the street, uh, you know, when they started doing front yard parking, which just is the worst thing for how a neighborhood looks. He put up some, uh, well, the railroad ties, put up some railroad ties to outline where the driveway was. So it just looked neater and people no longer park, you know, right up to their front entranceway. So, you know, maybe we can look at that. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and with that.
Before you go to the manager, John Tovitz did send you a message, Ellen, I don't know if you've seen it or not.
He did.
I would like to say thank you so much for your dedication to the city, for working harmoniously with the Board of Commissioners and our mayor. You've put us as a city in a very advantageous position for the future growth. Thank you. That's from John Tovitz.
And thank you for pulling that out. And and I do have a card that all of us have written on, but I'm gonna wait to give it to you until Commissioner Tovitz has added his words to to that.
I don't have much more to say other than, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with Commissioner Tovitz and his family. Um, you know, it's, he's had a pretty significant operation hopefully on the road to recovery with that. But um just to again say thank you uh to all of the board, the staff, and the citizens of the community and to also wish everyone happy holidays. Enjoy the time that you have with your family and travel safely.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Burnett?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gilreath. Uh, all in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Feliz Navidad. Take care of yourselves, be safe and sound, and thank you to each of you. And thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Blake Forrest and Sturz next.
It's not hard to do.
Anyway, so I am ready for this day.